And welcome to the September 26th City Council meeting for the city of Tualatin. Thank you all for joining us, both at home and in the audience. Our first rule of business will be to start the meeting in our customary fashion with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by Councilor Pratt.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Pratt. We would like to share a public health announcement that takes the place of our COVID-related health news that we were sharing at the beginning of our meetings during the pandemic. And Councilor Brooks would have a public health update for us?
Well, actually, we were doing a moment of silence, and now we do a public health update on COVID. And tonight I'm going to do kind of the same as what I did last time we met, which is remind people that the new vaccines are out. And when you're going and refreshing for fall, and now we're past fall equinox, where the days are getting shorter and people are back in school, renew, get on your calendar a time to get the new vaccine and update the vaccines for you and your family and be safe and responsible out there. It is hard sometimes to remember if you're really strong and healthy, that there are a lot of vulnerable people that are immunocompromised or older, and that have been affected in a very different way than some of us that are healthier and in a different stage of life. So be mindful out there that not everyone's quite comfortable yet. And for those of us that are more comfortable to do the right thing and be safe for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And then, moving on, we have a new employee introduction. We have an engineer associate, Bryce Donovan, joining the Tualatin family.
Good evening, councilors. I am Mike McCarthy, the interim city engineer here in Tualatin. And it's my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the engineering division of the community development department. That's Bryce Donovan.
Great, welcome.
Bryce is our new engineering associate, and he started here in Tualatin on September 6th. Bryce grew up on the East Coast, but has been a longtime resident of our area, experienced at the Sunrise Water Authority, prior work experience in the OHSU emergency department, county rescue, and UCS. And he brings a wide range of knowledge, skills, and abilities that can really help us. We're really excited about experiencing construction supervision, inspection, project management, and really just working with people through difficult times and situations. And as one of our engineering associates, Bryce will be managing capital projects, including some water and sewer work. He'll be working with me on the Tualatin Moving Forward program. And we're really glad to have Bryce here, and I know you join me in welcoming Bryce to Tual.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Yeah. We're good to be here. Appreciate it. Just a month in, but really loving it so far. So, thank you.
Great. Well, it sounds like you're going to be working on some projects that are near and dear to our heart, the Tualatin Moving Forward, and the other projects? Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, the water systems are extremely important. A lot of wetlands around here. And you have a great, broad, interesting background. So, thank you for choosing to come to Tualatin to work. Yeah, we appreciate having you here. Thanks, Mike. Next on the agenda is the public comment section of the meetings. This time allows anyone from the community to come and share news or questions of council, of anything that's not on tonight's agenda. We can take in-person questions. We can take questions through Zoom if there's anyone out there that has any questions. Did we get any sign-ups? Is there anyone joining us that might have a question? Okay, so we have no public comment. Next thing would be the consent agenda. The consent agenda is routinely enacted with a vote. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2022, and September 12th, 2022. We also have consideration of resolution number 5645-22, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with diversified abilities incorporated for janitorial services. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion for approval?
That we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second for approving the consent agenda as read. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. And that takes us right to our first special report, which we love to hear because it is the summer program recap and fall preview. But thank you so much.
Hello, Council. Good to see you all.
In person.
Good evening, Councilor President Grimes and Council. It's been a while since I've been here in person, in front of everybody.
Yeah, it's exciting still.
Very exciting, and we're really glad to be here to tell you about our summer programs and also the festival happening for fall. So, and I'm recreation manager.
Thank you, Jules.
Sarah Jessus, Public Services Supervisor at the library.
Thank you, Sarah.
Oh, this summer felt a little more normal. What you're seeing in the picture is one of our science on the plaza programs. We made paper trajectories and shot them across the plaza. We had 2,179 readers sign up, which felt great after two years of we having like a blip. 735 people returned logs at the end of the summer, which is a pretty great return rate. If you can spare me like two seconds of musical theater, 1,626,000.
Well done. Well done. Thank you.
Over the summer, we had 160 programs in total, 90 for kids, nine for teens, six for adults, 55 for all ages. We were a summer lunch site once again, and actually the only summer lunch site that continued throughout the summer in Tualatin. We had, including those programs, our open labs with our Makerspace and other programs in there as well. And we brought music back as well. Yep. So, we had the Willamette Valley Chamber Music Festival back for the second year, and they've already said yes to next year. Red Yarn is a really popular kid musician, and he's got his protege. Came to the guitar all ready to play with him. We had a massive kickoff party at the beginning of summer reading with about 800 people attending. So, it felt like old songs.
And I think that will be a common theme, you might notice, throughout this presentation tonight. So, one of the things we kind of kicked off the summer with in early July was Viva Tualatin, Celebration of Arts and Culture. And this was the third year of the event, the second year of it feeling like an actual thing. It was held in the Folly Park, and we had five different performances. You can see a couple of them here. We had the White Lotus Lion Dance Group, which was new this year, which is a lot of really exciting and a little nerve-wracking for me. The cool thing about Viva Tualatin is it really is a cross-departmental cooperation to be able to make this happen. It's the Parks Department, it's the library, it's admin, it's parks maintenance. It's everybody working together to make this happen. And I know I saw a lot of councilors out at the event, and so we really appreciate your support with that. So, addition to our five performers, we had about 20 community booths, and we had all sorts of crafts and family activities and food, and pretty much everything except for the food was free, which we really liked to be able to do. Another great year for Viva Tualatin. And then, summer camp. So, summer camp hasn't stopped, you know, through all of COVID. We kept going because the need is there. And we have shifted it. So, now our summer camp programs run exclusively outside in community park. We have outgrown the building, Van Riden building. We had over 400 kids in the kids, the first through sixth grader camp. And we had 48 teens in the teen camp. We would have had more. We had to cancel the first four weeks because we did not have enough staff.
Oh, gosh.
But we got a great pinch hitter in the halfway through the summer, and it was fantastic. So, that worked out. It worked out very well in the end. One of the interesting things about our summer camps, two interesting things. One is we had 35 scholarships, individual scholarships awarded, which is up from last year, which we had 25, so we've increased. And we had 600 kids on the waitlist. So, we had more people on the waitlist than we had six enrolled in camp. And so, someday we'll have enough staff to manage a program of that size. But right now, we were really happy with what we did and how many people we served this summer. It was a lot of fun. The picture in the top right-hand corner was an impromptu end-of-day staff wiffle ball game with some of the kids who are still there for aftercare, and they thought it was the coolest thing.
Oh, my God.
They'll be remembering that for the years. It was great. They had concerts. Concerts were back in full force. So, we had our four Friday night concerts, two lunchtime concerts. One of those was our bigger concert that was done on the formerly known as the Crockish Festival weekend. And we had over 5,000 people come out for those concerts. And I know we saw a lot of you out there too, and they were just so much fun. It's such a nice evening in Tualatin to be out in the parks and enjoying great music and just seeing our community come together. So, the two lunchtime concerts were a lot of fun. That was sort of a new, you know, try and see how it works out. And those were very, very well received, so we're hoping to do that again next summer.
So, we have a very robust teen volunteer program in the summer at the library. And this year, we expanded it to include tweens. One of the things that we did during our closure, and we weren't able to offer the programs as a tween reader program where kids could sign up and document they were reading to members of their family or their dog or whoever and earn free books. And we wanted to keep those kids engaged with the library. So, we kind of had a senior and junior cohort of volunteers. We also have volunteers with our Makerspace, and we do have our shelters back. And then, for our bigger events, for Blender Dash and Viva Tualatin, those, of course, rely on a lot of volunteer power as well. And I would say they, evidence says they're having fun. So.
I think it's a win-win for everyone. And then, we have our park volunteers. So, there is so much happening in our parks in the summer, and a lot of it happens with the help of volunteers. So, we have Team Tualatin, which is the youth summer park volunteer program. It's always very, very popular, and as you can see, they might be having a little bit of fun as well. Corporate and group volunteers, Eagle Scout. We had an Eagle Scout. Those 110 hours are one Eagle Scout, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Project. And the DIY volunteers, which was a program that kind of started during COVID as a way for people to still contribute and help out without having to gather with a lot of people. So, that's, again, one of those things that we liked it so much. It's continuing. And then, in the fall, lots of tree plantings are happening. The Hug a Tree on October 7th, the Put Down Roots event, and the Hug a Street. Love to see everybody out at those events.
The Tualatin Police Department, of course, had their summer programs as well. They have a great camp going with 125 kids. And National Night Out was back in a much bigger way than it's been the past few years as well, with 15 different neighborhood events.
And the Wantita Pole Center. So, Wantita Pole Center, of course, is also back in full force with all of the programs, and we're glad to see everyone continuing to take advantage of those programs. Fitness, enrichment, travel, wellness. For 3,475 attendees, so that's an individual. It may or may not be a duplicated count, but there's a lot of people going in through that building every day and taking advantage of those programs. The other thing that we're really happy about is that the Meals on Wheels program has returned in a smaller capacity. They're just Tuesday and Thursday, but we are getting quite a few people coming every day now to take advantage of that service. And decoration partners, there's a lot of things happening in our parks and in Tualatin that we are really proud to partner with. So, we're Arts Camp, of course, in Brown's Ferry Park, Skyhawk Sports Camp. They run about 30 different programs in our parks in the summertime, sports-based programs. So, that's great because there is a definite demand. We actually partnered with a new group this summer called Skate Like a Girl. Not just for girls, but they're learn-to-ski programs that really focus a lot on character development and empowerment and really good sportsmanship. So, we're really happy with that and hope to have them back next summer. Of course, our Tualatin Youth Sports Leagues, and then the Tualatin Historical Society, which always has lots of great programs happening on a regular basis in that and the Heritage Center.
So, we are officially involved. We started Storytimes last week. We're getting back into that routine. And we have some themes coming up for the fall. September is really about kind of getting back into that fall groove. But then, in October, we have all kinds of pumpkin and gently spooky things going on. Our Shrunken Regatta is back. We came up with this last year when the pumpkin regatta was canceled. People can get a kit with a miniature pumpkin and decorate it. And we, you know, have a display of at least decorated mini pumpkins. So, that's on right now, and you're welcome to come by and pick up a kit. Um, we have a craft with luminaries coming up. And then, November, November's all about dinosaurs, except we're also bringing music back on the first three Sundays of the month.
Good.
Music back at the hearth. So. Pretty busy, actually.
All right. And then, the Pole Center Fall Preview. The big, the big event or program that's coming back is the Veterans Recognition Program. We have not done this program since 2019. So, we're really, really proud to be able to bring that program back to the Wantita Pole Center live and in person on November 4th. We'll also have Active Aging Week, October 3rd through 7th. And then, the Earthwise Crew will be going to the White Arboretum on September 30th for forest bathing. Councilor Brooks has also signed up for that program. There's a lot of really, really innovative programming coming out of the Pole Center. We're really glad to be able to offer that. Oh, and there's a little thing that's happening this summer called the West Coast Giant Pumpkin Regatta. It is the 17th. We don't call them annual anymore because they are no longer annual. However, it is the 17th Pumpkin Regatta that will be held at the Lake of the Commons on Sunday, October 16th. That is a, that is not a typo. It is on a Sunday. Because the event has gotten so big, we had to expand it to two days. So, on Sunday, October 16th, from 10 until 4, I'm going to bring 20,000 of your friends. Lake. Some of the things, of course, the Giant Pumpkin Boat Races. The 5K Regatta Run will be on that Sunday morning at 9:00 a.m. in Community Park. Lots of free family entertainment, costume contests, crafts, food. Everything is free unless you would like to buy food or souvenirs. Pumpkin or a pumpkin or a pumpkin for craft. So, the Pumpkin Regatta, we're really, really. You know, this is one of those events that we have had this event so many times, and you kind of think, oh, it's old hat. We can do it again. It's no big deal. We haven't done it in a few years. It feels like it's brand new.
And it's huge.
And it's huge. And it's huge. So, but it is coming back, and it's coming back big. So, hope to see you all there. And then, the other part of Pumpkin Regatta Weekend is the Pumpkins and Pints and Terminator Wayoff, which is Saturday, October 15th from noon until 4. So, this is where the pumpkin growers, and there is actually the club, the Pacific Giant Vegetable Growers, bring their giant pumpkins and giant vegetables to be weighed off for prizes. And so, this is happening again on Saturday at Stinkin Brewing Company. If you want to see those big pumpkins up close and personal before they go into the water, this is the place to do it. And I believe that concludes our summer program recap and fall preview. Great to see everyone here, and we're really happy to be back. The library and events and tree plantings and all the great stuff that's happening this fall.
Oh, thank you guys so much. It just never fails to amaze me how many programs, how many people from the community are served, the kids in the summer camps, all of the programs through the library that are like too numerous to mention. I mean, to be able to do and impact so many people with the size staff we have, it just, you guys just like hats off. It's amazing, absolutely amazing. And the feedback from the people that take part in the programs, the parents that have kids in the summer programs, it's always just exemplary. I mean, kids have a great time. Families have a great time. The community is so well-served with the concerts and the events. It's just amazing what you guys do. So, thank you so much. Have a question? Yes.
I have a couple of questions. One was with the Skate Like a Girl program, what kind of skating is it?
Oh, skateboarding.
Skateboarding. Okay.
And it's how that was skate parked.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay. And then, I used to skateboard when I was a kid, believe it or not. And then, the second question I had was, I know usually with the art, I forget her name, the artist's name, and it's usually as a title. And I was just curious if you know the title.
So, the artist, her name is Brenna White, and the title for the piece, I'm not sure. But she is a teacher at Tualatin High School, and she will be at the regatta and selling art, including some, I don't want to give anything away. But she will be at the regatta.
That's great.
So, she's been our official regatta artist every year since 2009.
And then, I just want to put again in a plug too for the Earthwise Crew. That's some of the things that I've been doing a lot of. We partner with the Tualatin Sustainability Network as well and do cross-pollination and help raise awareness that's going on. And we're really excited about the arboretum, forest bathing. The statistics on this is amazing, forest bathing. It's really forced. It translates to forced immersion. But they pay for it in Japan because the health benefits are so good. So, it's very, very good for cardiac health. There's all kinds of research and reasons why. And so, whether you can come or not, this, I think it's this Friday, first day of Friday, it's worth learning about and trying your own mindfulness walks in nature. And we have so many great places to do it here in our city. So, thank you so much. It's a lot of work, both of you too. And standing up the lunch program, it's very sad to me that it was only one site, but the fact that we have the libraries doing it is amazing. Bringing the music back is great. And then, I've said this before, Julie, you work so hard in standing up the camps all summer and just always making it look like it's 10 times the fun that anyone else is having, whether you're working a 12-hour day. At the end of the day, you're still always so bright and cheerful. And then, I also want to say that we're going to be hosting the pumpkin bowling, which I'm learning about what pumpkin bowling actually is. So, Claire's taken up the lead on that. But there's going to be a bunch of teens helping out with the pumpkin bowling part of the pumpkin regatta. I'm super excited about that.
It's great.
Any other questions?
Can I go to the later holidays and ask if we're going to have the holiday lights?
No. They're way too popular. I was asked, actually, last week. Perfect. Anybody else? Questions?
I don't have a question, but just more of a statement for those out there listening in TV worlds or online. I mean, I'm just, I'm just so impressed by all the, all the people that we serve and that use our parks every single day. And I think that just puts an exclamation mark on something that we talked about earlier, which is the Parks Bond and how important it is and how many people do use our parks and our partners, like the Tualatin Youth Sports Groups that need more field spaces to serve the children of our community. And thinking of some of these, some of these programmings that could be elevated with a, with water access, better water access. So, for those out there listening, we hope that you support the Parks Bond to support this wonderful, all these wonderful, great things that you're doing. So, thank you.
I did tell on that because I went on the kayaking thing. And to me, it was a little hard for me to go over to Tiger to cook for her to put in with the Tualatin River Keepers and the Wantita Pole Center instead of our own put-in because we just don't have the facility that we'd like to have. So, thank you.
Perfect. And if anybody would be interested still in possibly signing up to Captain a Pumpkin at the regatta, are there ways to still sign up for that? Are we full?
Okay. But if the public lottery has closed, we actually opened up the lottery in September. And in a typical year, we get about 100 or so submissions. This year, we had 200. So, there's.
Well, people are excited for it to come back. Yeah.
The word is out. We have, generally, we hope for around 20 pumpkins. We do four different races.
Oh, that's perfect. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Yes.
Thank you. Very awesome. And I was, I'm glad that everything is just coming together. I'm just, I was really happy to see the people at Viva Tualatin, all those concerts, the kids. I mean, it's just been amazing. Thank you very much for that. Do you need any volunteers for all these activities that you're doing and/or the upcoming activities are happening?
Yeah. There are always volunteer opportunities. And on the website, tualatinorganism.gov/volunteer, you can sign up to volunteer at the tree plantings, at Pumpkin Regatta. There's lots and lots of opportunities, tons of opportunities at the library. You can always use volunteers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to general business, we have consideration of recommendation from the council committee on advisory appointments. I apologize.
Councilor is going to start, and then Councilor Brooks and I will share the names.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you so much. So, as you know, our, we meet, the three of us, and we, Councilor Pratt, Councilor Brooks, and myself, we meet probably about once a month, and we get to talk to a lot of community Tualatin residents that want to be a part of a council or a committee, but to be part of a committee to represent, to come to us and advise us. And it's called Council Committee Advisory Appoint, Advisory to us, right? So, you all kind of form a committee. You talk to us about what things are happening within the city. So, we had one couple of months, couple of weeks ago, I can't remember when. But it's always amazing to see the amount of people from our community that have the willing and the heart to volunteer and be a part of this committee or that they want to continue being on this committee. So, I'm very thankful to all of them. So, if you're hearing me, thank you so much. Please continue to volunteer, continue to look at opportunities to serve your community. And we're very grateful that you have that willingness. And I'm going to have Councilor Pratt and Councilor Brooks read the names.
Thank you.
Okay, for the Architectural Review Board, and it's an alternate. It's, we selected Matt Kilmartin. And then, for the Library Advisory Committee, we had two people in their reappointments, Dana Paulino, who I served on Tea Park with, and Thea Woods.
Very good.
And then. And then, um, what was, what should I be doing? The middle one. Oh, the middle one, so, oh, the Twolton Planning Commission, we selected Bill Beers. The Planning Commission, uh, Dan, sorry, Beck Huber and Ursula Toon. So we just want to say congratulations to everybody. And this time, I will say, we had more applicants than we had positions available. And we always, there were many applicants that we wish we could have appointed. They're all really strong applicants, so just because you weren't selected doesn't mean that you weren't a really good fit for the committee. And there's, um, other opportunities, um, for volunteering. And I just want to thank Nicole too, we work with Nicole on this committee. She always helps us, we think of ideas to share with people that apply. And she would be a good person to talk to if you're interested in serving on any of our city committees. Or if you're interested in other volunteer opportunities that help prepare you to serve on these committees. Because there's the other volunteer opportunities as we know, when we've got, like, look at what this thing with six hundred, um, people that we couldn't serve and the four hundred people we could for, just for, um, camp. So there's all kinds of great ways to be of service to the community. And, and congratulations to all the people who were appointed, thank you.
And I think Councilor Saka, you had. Great, well, thank you. And yes, thank you very much to everyone who made application and interviewed. And thank you to all the applicants that took the recommendation and were able to, uh, serve on the committees. The volunteer time is always so greatly appreciated. And I'm sure you guys find the same thing I do, which is I'm always so humbled and amazed by the amount of talent and the backgrounds that people bring to these committees and to these, um, volunteer opportunities and what they donate back to the community.
We're very fortunate.
It's absolutely amazing to me and so appreciated. And I think it's the reason that the city in a large part can make these sort of programs and these opportunities for the people that live here and the children and the families. Because we have this amazing army of volunteers that, um, help us put on these projects and, and just give innumerable uncountable hours back to the city. And I think that's terrific. I think that we should make a formal acceptance of the recommendation, um, from the CCAA Committee. You want to make, should we make a motion and have a second to?
Make a motion to, or should I?
Yeah, that's fine, just accept the appointments.
Accept the appointments that the CC, that the committee.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to, um, accept the recommendations from the CCAA Committee. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? None, so it's a unanimous approval of the recommendations. We have no items removed from the consent agenda, so we can move on to council communications if there's anything from earlier that we'd like to share. Okay, um, we'll start with Councilor Hillary and work our way in, how about that?
I just wanted to say, happy birthday to our Jewish neighbors.
Oh yes, thank you for remembering that, Councilor.
Oh, well, since we're talking about pumpkin regatta, I just wanted to let everybody know that if you want to, um, support the Community Police Foundation, we're going to have a, a race. You can buy a little rubber ducky for ten dollars and it supports, um, our programs. Like we bought AEDs, we do the shop with a cup program, we support the retirement and maintenance program for Tony or whoever follows Tony.
Yeah.
And, um, we're trying to help cover the cost for some health screenings for our officers right now. So you can go to tucpf.org and they're ten dollars each. And then we're having the firefighters and the police officers race some people in the public because it's so popular. And they will pick the winning ducks.
Oh, that's great. Very good. Yeah, can't let that go by. Councilor Brooks?
I, there was a lot that was brought up for me with the review that, um, we were so fortunate to hear. I want to just remind people about the Maker Space. When I did the tour the other week of the library, um, with our director, Jerian, it was so amazing. I still have to return the telescope that I took out from the Library of Things, the Library of Saint Things and the Maker Space. If you haven't been over and checked it out, it's really worth going there. I also wanted to talk about, there's a book club, I'm going to be doing the book club, um, reading this time. And you don't have to always go to the book club to do the Wantita Pole Book Club. You can just do whatever book, you can pick and choose. This one, we're doing Music of Bees, so of course, and it's a local author from Oregon. So, um, if you have read it or if you're reading it or you want to pick it up and read it and come to the book club, um, join us. And then just again, a plug for the Forest Bathing again. And then the, um, when I talked earlier about the backyard habitat programs, the planting that's in November is also going to be the backyard habitat planting. And the litter blitz is also something that we partner with, with the Twolton Sustainability Network. And then just a reminder again, please come and ask us questions, come, um, Sunday from ten to noon at Bella Two and ask questions about the parks.
Perfect, yeah, all right, thank you. Councilor Saka? All right, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Mira, Councilor is?
Thank you, I just, uh, wanted to let everyone, I didn't have like an official meeting, but I did, uh, want to tell the public that, um, we are having Twolatinos this Wednesday at six PM at the, um, Public Library. So if you're, um, out there, I want to hear a little bit more about what's going on, uh, with that group. Just show up and we can contact Betsy, uh, at the city. But, um, it's this Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at six PM. And the other, um, event that I wanted to promote is, well, not promote, but kind of, we actually support, um, Born and Free Clinics here in Twolleton. And they will be having their, um, gala called Borlandia. And, um, it's October twenty-second, go to the website for more information because, uh, I mean, I gave you the right information, but it's bornandclinics.org and it's Borlandia, their event.
Great, thank you. All right, I think that takes care of all the business and communication for tonight, so if we have a motion to adjourn. All right, we have motion in a second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There you go, thank you so much, thank you guys all for joining us tonight, appreciate it. Thank you guys.